Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I am Kelly Curry, the Chair of the Sorrento Select. Welcome to this public hearing regarding the appeal of the Dorries, of the denial of a renewal of a building permit. Our attorney, Dr. Lyons, is going to take it from here. Please.
No, I'll shift over here. But good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Lyons, Attorney at the Postwork, the Law Company. So I'm just going to address some procedural issues regarding the go over the format at next hearing, what we're doing, and how we'll kind of format it, and we'll get into a few issues before we start. So as some preparer statements, I'll read. The Sorrento Select Board is meeting here tonight, consider the appeal filed by the Dorries, Daniel and Susan Clancy-Dority, regarding the Sorrento Code and Personal Officer December 13th, 2022, denial of building permit renewal. The matter was originally appealed to the Hancock County Superior Court, but was remanded to this Select Board for review by an order of the court dated on November 7th, 2023. The Select Board has jurisdiction to hear this appeal pursuant to Section 5 of the Sorrento Land Use Act. The Dorries privately filed this appeal pursuant to Section 5 of the Land Use Act. The Select Board is conducting a de novo hearing of the Dorries' appeal. Both the Code and Personal Officer and the Dorries filed written materials consistent with the deadline set out in the notice of this meeting, including exhibits, written argument, proposed findings of fact, and conclusions of law. Two written public comments were submitted to this Select Board for consideration prior to the deadline set out in the public notice. Both the Code and Personal Officer and the Dorries are reverberating by legal counsel here tonight. So for the format of the appeal hearing, the Dorries will have 30 minutes to present evidence and argument, followed by questions from the Select Board, and then questions from the CBO. Then the CEO has 30 minutes to present evidence and argument, followed by questions from the Select Board, and then questions from the Dorries. Then any member of the public that attends in person will have three minutes to speak on issues relevant to the appeal. The party will then be able to ask anyone in the public, any questions, if they present any testimony or evidence. Then the hearing will be closed, and the Select Board will deliver it. The presiding officer is the chair or acting chair of the Select Board. The presiding officer has the authority to rule upon issues of evidence, regulate the course of the hearing, rule upon issues of procedure, and takes that other actions that may be ordered by the Select Board or that are necessary for the efficient and orderly conduct of the hearing. On that note of an efficient and orderly conduct of the hearing, we ask that anyone that is not recognized by the Select Board to speak, to wait their turn until it is their opportunity to speak for the public, that would be when there will be an opportunity for public comment. So we ask them, wait to speak, raise your hand or anything until that, then you have your opportunity for three minutes to speak. So we thank you for your cooperation in that. Before we initiate the hearing, the Select Board needs to address many issues of whether they may have a conflict of interest. So many statutes and case law define when an official will be presumed to have the self-interest while performing particular governmental action, and thus have a conflict of interest. There are three conflict rules that I'll present to your gentlemen tonight. There's a business interest, professional financial interest, or what's called an appearance of impropriety. Business interest applies only to a member that is an officer, director, partner, associate, employee, or stockholder of a private corporation, business, or other economic entity, which is the subject of the issue before the committee, and is directly or indirectly the owner of at least 10% of the stock of the private corporation or owns at least 10% interest in the business or other economic entity. A personal financial interest is governed by many case law and applies to standard of whether the municipal official, by reason of his interest, is placed in a situation where temptation, deter their own governmental, their own personal, temporary interests to the prejudice of the interests of those for whom the law operates, requires.
That's okay.
That's from a case out of 1950, so you'll want to use the, what end did we, the language there? The third is the appearance of impropriety, which is a test of whether an appearance of a conflict of interest exists. It relates to whether personal relationships or competing interests may create an appearance of impropriety sufficient to undermine public confidence in fairness and honesty of local officials. So with all that, at this point, all the Select Board membership that vote whether they believe they have a conflict of interest regarding the subject and matter of this case.
Yes. I don't think I have a conflict of interest. Last year in April, I found a letter, someone had been involved or mingled the facts for this situation, and they talked about other issues, and I believe this shows I have been biased against the Dorries' handkerchiefs. I believe it matters that while making judgments, avoid even the appearance of bias. I believe it matters that while making judgments, not give anyone doubts about their impartial. Therefore, regarding this case before us, in which I couldn't be adjudged, I refuse to find out.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the Select Board, one who goes to the issue or concern regarding whether they may have a conflict of interest?
Yes, I'd like to get something clear. And when the CEO came to the Select Board and said, you know, when we learned that there was a suit against the town because of the CEO's decision denied the permit, I was on the Select Board, and we had a discussion, and what we talked about, there were two things. One was the fact that a suit against the town would mean that we would have to spend a lot of money on lawyer's fees, and there was some worry about whether about that was against the town. But I said that, I was the one, I'm going to say, no, you have to be in the, our position in the suit. The reason is that at the time, we need to be sure that people in town realize that we will enforce what we have said. If we don't show that as a, you know, situation, nobody will pay any attention, because in all places, try to sue for quick. So I was the one who forced that, but we didn't know what suit was or anything. It was not, you know, personalized. The town's, what was in the town's best interest, and that we don't. But I was the one who said, yes, we have to sue. I don't, I mean, I don't see that as a conflict of interest, given that I did it as part of the town, not personally.
Who, who, who?
No, I don't feel that you're looking before us, taking our evidence and.
I guess, but I should, you do, and certainly I have asked the chairs, reduce yourself, going to be able to force actions between you and the town on that level today.
Sure. Can I, can you go back up? There's some questions here.
I'm Ed Garrett. Good evening. You made reference in your prepared remarks, when you recuse yourself to a letter. I assume that letter that I submitted is part of our package of materials, and we've seen it, entitled Dear Friends of Sorrento. Okay, and you were one of the writers of that letter?
Yes, hands on us.
Hands on us, and I don't have the copy to sign, I just have the copy of your name on it. Along with Catherine McTrainer-Weldon and Daphne Proust. So that was a letter directing up to the residents or taxpayers of Sorrento, but to a specific group of 35 of them. Who, what were the characteristics of that group of people that the letter sent?
It was people who we believed, it was Sorrento taxpayers, they were all Sorrento taxpayers, not, not as a voting board. And it was people who we believed had the deep powers and the generosity to help fund it, to help heal the town.
So before the letter went out, did the Select Board discuss its willingness to accept donations from that group of people, and to declare those donations as exempt, which is what this letter says?
Before the letter went out, I don't think so.
After the letter went out, before, had to take some action.
Well, if the Board knew that, remember that there was a motion, you can find it in the.
Try to remember, yeah.
The whole set. Because the town has to, the Board has to accept donations, and it has to lead all.
Well, we've got a, you know, I know, one of the year, we have one, that's a pretty good year, that it's close, the town accept donations.
Sure, right.
But we, but in addition to that, we, there was a motion, because I remember, and it was to accept these donations to the legal and official fees account, but I can't tell you the date of the.
Did the other board members ever see this letter that we sent out, this fundraising letter?
I don't know.
You don't know, I'll ask them.
I don't know.
Okay, and you thought it necessary to raise $30,000?
Oh, that was just a first, it's all that, that's right there.
Yeah.
First is all that, we just said, no, we can, no, it'd be a deal, 100, but very long.
And you were concerned not just with this particular appeal, but with things like rights and paid your streets or roads and all that, that these agitators, the Dorries had brought up those issues right there.
Well, that's your.
Well, what's your, let's look at what your letter says. The fundraising we use specifically for current and future disputes and litigation raised by the individual currently in dispute with respect to the high building. It would be extended to other claims, the gas in town, brought by the same individual or the individual representatives, and earlier on in the letter, and specifically makes reference to paid your streets.
Yeah, that is a lot of energy myself.
Along my.
This is.
So, yeah, so you have, right, okay, right. So after the letter went out and the funds started to come in, the Select Board had voted to accept those funds. And would it be fair to say that the Board knew when it was accepting those funds, that those funds were to be used specifically to file the Dorries?
It would be used to defend the town, and thus, and the reason you see that started saying is because at the time, there was no money in the legal and official days account. For years, that account has been funded about $1,000 a year, maybe, even that lasts over the years, and we never really had to spend that much. This is the first time in my life that anyone has ever sued Sorrento, and all of a sudden, they don't see expenses. We could have done four things. We could have asked, we could have suggested the Board go, go make it up to circus. We could have said, it's not, you're just taxpayers, the Board could have borrowed and have to pay back with any of them. The Board could have called a special account meeting and raised everybody's taxes for this, or we could have gone with donations, and we just, we, the three of us, just felt that asking everybody, raising everybody's taxes, saying that would be a little perp potential for both for those lower income people, and that we know that there are people with plenty of money and very generous in Sorrento who might be willing to help, and we reached out to them, and indeed, they did.
So you thought that was a better course of action, and that's the taxpayers who had voted, spent the service.
Yeah, that was a vote.
That's what they.
And that was gone.
Right.
And that was gone. Meanwhile, there was a legal lawsuit against the town, and our CEO, Mr. Jordan, advised the town to defend his position because either you have a land use warrant or you don't. And the Board said, there was no money there, what are you going to do? We wanted to defend, cause money.
Okay.
And we thought, honestly, that we were helping the town. Maybe we were wrong, maybe we should have just raided everybody's house.
Do you have any idea, they were, I think, 2016, responded to your request, I think, 35?
I'm just a little more of that.
Well, was it, I mean, I'm looking at the transaction before provided between five boroughs and that count of 20 cities. Well, you have that, do you want to show to?
No, I don't.
And all of those are, are models.
Yeah, they are.
You know what they are?
I certainly do not, wish I did.
Really? Okay, well, you didn't know anybody, I guess.
Absolutely not. I felt that my, my, who wrote this letter and being a part of it.
And I noticed that.
I know.
True, well, it does, actually, Katrina Wellman donated, she was one of the writers, she donated.
Yeah, she did.
And.
Don't think, don't believe it.
You don't think she donated?
I don't think so. She donated the hour to this town, $1,000 getting it.
Oh, well, maybe it was. For one of those cases, $10,000.
Great. I've been, I spoke to my, I really, the other day, because we know, we want to know who the support people are. And she very carefully got all the checks for you, she got pictures of the checks, which I believe she sent to you. She, you know, the bank it came from, you know, the check number, and you.
For the anonymous.
The J.
Anonymous, for the anonymous.
Yes, those four numbers. And your first request, I answered for three, you don't know what.
Well, when, when it says, I have the anonymous. Did the other, use of the word.
Yeah, I was actually, and I said, right, get all the information you can, give it to them, and she did.
Do you have?
I would, I would, you know, who could get $10,000, because it's coming at this guy.
Do you have, obviously, do you have a copy of the mail list? Does everybody, do you have a list of, do you have a?
It's possible that Katrina, she might give it to us.
I don't think, yeah, I still do that later, if this matter goes any further, because you got later. Okay. Well, that would be.
I just wanted to say that none of those people who donated are living in this case town.
Thank you. May I ask, Mr. Will Band, if I actually have, so Mr. Will Band, you may have seen the materials that we sent into the town, and I'm sure you've actually interviewed them. One is a letter from Kathy Moore, which she talked about a file that you kept, a special file that you kept on Dorries. Do you know anything about that? Yes. Tell me what's in that file, and why you put a catch such a file.
That file was in other files of Apple reels.
She suggested you kept it in a separate file, in the bottom drawer, computer desk in the corner of the room.
That's where I saw the active files for the Home Office and the Office of Department of Public Affairs.
I said, and that, they, there were other files, but it is. And we want, when the Board agreed to accept the donation of money for people knowing, I know, of the defense fund, have you seen that letter?
I saw that, I was.
Well, I guess what I have is the final thing, if I showed it to you, tell me if it's any different than the rap, so.
It problems, it's, we, we.
Okay. So you were in agreement with the, with the way that she's funding the raid, and they wanted to just let her accept the money from the town?
The fund were raised, the support of the town, I didn't think about.
Thank you. And last, did you present that the meeting when the Board voted to accept these funds?
Well, if I were there, I would have voted to accept.
Right, because we, you stated it's a, early costs.
To, yeah, it's sort of down, yeah.
Right, right, and this letter talks about the one justice appeal, doesn't, the one like, or anything to do.
I had been concerned, who was the president soon? I would, on that, because I figured that is all, it's all around you.
Well, with, with, I'm going to ask, and both of these individuals being sued in this hearing, seems to me that they participated in the fundraiser, except I can't remember if it's on press, and even the Dorries are sadly, sadly, they have issued quite a, it's just a personal stall, $30,000 request, and I don't think we're going to get a fair here for it.
Officer, so as far as the town accepting the funds, you know, the Select Board, you know, we didn't, we didn't, edited or anything, that was totally outside of the Board, that was there.
But you saw, you, you.
I started out to argue with the people who were targeting, it was there.
You won't tell me, said that information?
Well, I was, it, it wasn't the town's best interest to accept them after, to accept the donations.
If you have a road wash out, would you send a letter to these 35 people, or would you vote, and have, I'm getting ready for a fix around?
Well, we have, we already have a problem now with January storms, and I imagine we should probably pardon.
Yeah, and have you accepted donations for a specific cause?
I'm sure we have. Yeah, our, very substance in the building.
Have you had a sit in judgment of an issue of our department, based on one of those funds?
Yeah, right. Okay. Robbie, anything else to the, anyway, do you have any comments?
Are you going to question? I, I respect the Board members' decision about other than that we had a conflict, and I'm looking to accept whatever their opinions.
Okay.
So I think attorney bear has made his position clear on the record, on projecting to disprove that you can't fairly truly claim this matter. That's, that's ultimately the decision for the two views to make, whether or not you can fairly preside over this matter, considering everything that's been said, and here are your.
Okay, when you had the suit, and I said that you should stand back against the suit in order to, so that people around realize that we, we could buy, there were four things that the, during, and that's some, I mean, when you're doing this, and the judges, it's quite different. What you're doing, you don't care about any of that, what you have, you look at the, the, forget what people, other than that are doing, you look at what happened, this and this, and this, and this, and you don't, it's not personal, it's what is there, or there, or there, I can't actually have been edited, spent, I can't balance that, so I done that, but I mean, so it, it's very, if I have to study, you have anything to do with, because you're looking at things that don't have to do with people, and this happened, and this happened, and this.
Well, but the, the problem is, the problem with that is that during the time period that you were accepting these funds, as you said, you feel the need to defend the town, the town's position. You weren't in a position of being a judge, you didn't expect to be a judge, you're not in power, and yet you freely acknowledge and omit that you're driven by a desire to defend the town, and just troubled by, and then just troubled by the notion, that's your job, you can act fairly, and get any power, by by your judicial powers, right?
Understood, Dan, I think your final could be clearly, Dan, you have anything else? I'm concerned that District Mayor is now arguing with Board members and derating Board members, and it's not appropriate, and it cannot be heard. You can, I, I, no issue with Board members disclosing whether they can lead us a conflict about the merits of this case, but it's not ever appropriate to derate anybody, unless the, the Select Board, the Board, the tribunal, the circuit. And so I just want to make sure that the record is, that that checked to for the period.
Thank you, both of you. I think at this point, we'll end the argument or anything else regarding the conflict of interest issue, and/or hopefully to determine whether or not we receive, in presiding over this matter.
I believe that facts of the case will, will work for themselves, and won't be, won't be affected by any potential bias, was the reason.
Okay, so you, you're positioned, you don't have a bias, and you can proceed, okay. Dan?
That's more position, it's the facts and other things.
Okay, you're definitely editing arguments, notably, Dan's suggestions on the record. So with that, now let's start the hearing. And as I said, at the outset, the Dorries will have 30 minutes to present their case and argument, and then at that point, the Select Board makes questions, and then they go over certain questions. So it's 6:29, and we'll give you a roundup until 7:00. We'll keep it according, that would be very.
Sure, thank you. So is it fair to say that both Board members have had an opportunity to have, you all included, submitted?
Yes.
So what this case is about, it's easy to sort of monologically, is that the plan is applied for a building permit, and that's what it achieves.
I'm going to speak out, other people.
No, I'm not going to yell on my faces, so if you got away from me, annoying that very. The Dorries, the Dorries filed an application for a permit to build a two bedroom cottage, and for loud, a better way to describe it, a two parrot crib, an office and a bed. They did that in. They did that in 20, in October of 20. The building that they first constructed was the one that was described as an office, garage and bed. In the process of that construction, as you will note, the Doris believed that they would build two dwellings structures on their land. And they commissioned their soil evaluator to design a system that would accommodate not just two, three, two-bedroom cottages, two, two-bedroom cottages, but rather three, an existing one and two cottages that they would build. The state of Maine blessed those, blessed that application, said, yes, you can do that. That's in the materials. I'm sure that you've seen it. Part of the town's blessing of that is what I have entitled, penalty number one, which is the letter from Alexander Pugh, which plainly states that I think there are lots of records and such, and on left side rules, ten C M R 543. And they're allowed to construct what they impose. So they've got a building permit for the first was described as a garage with a bedroom and an office and a house, two, a two-bedroom, two-bedroom cottage. They go to the code officer with their total subterranean space for our plans. You can see those, those are supplemental exhibit one continued. And that plan, plan B seven, I highlighted it here for you, three, two-bedroom, single-family halls. Says that in two or three different places, garage with two-bedroom apartments. Garage, two-bedroom apartment. The code officer writes, and you will see in exhibit number three, supplemental exhibit number three, from your code officer, to Susan Dory, this is what we needed from Brent. He's the DHS guy, this soil guy. You are all set on the septic plan, so have Kevin go ahead and don't. So that's in December of 2021. We just want to make sure. And that was in December of 2021. So again, that is December 27th, you will notice that it's a common supplemental number four. Susan Dory writes to Don Baker, your code officer at the time, outlining everything that they're going to do and asking if there's any, any problem with that, as soon as the permit that he's already issued. She follows up, because if you notice, she's persistent. She follows up on December 31st, 2021. And in that letter, she specifically says, and I'd like you to note this, it's a common supplemental number five. Building permit number six dash two-four, Matt five lot 24, dated October 14th, 2020. Amendment to this permit is requested to create a second bedroom within the garage structure and full kitchen as allowed by the separate expansion. Why do I go into this detail? Because the code officer in his file, unless it suggests that we pulled the wool over his own eye. But the code officer, when he issued a specific permit, again, for the cottage in January of 2022, wasn't aware that there was a kitchen going into the first building that had been constructed. Well, it's plain that he was aware of the fact that it would be a cottage, a two-bedroom cottage, which is all over exhibit L and all over exhibit number supplemental five, is again, a two-bedroom cottage within the garage structure and a full kitchen, a full kitchen. So the suggestion that he didn't know what we were doing is undermined by the town's own records. Now, is any of that important? Yes, it very much is, because I think it's supposed to get everybody all knocked out. But what is important is that he issued a permit in January 2022 for 1,500 square feet, two-bedroom cottage on lot four. Lots of the question, two, four. So he issued a permit specifically for that. Doris says that in three further, if the asset can appeal, if their permit applications do not. It doesn't say that anyone else can appeal, but even if anyone else could appeal, they would have 30 days to file an appeal. Now, there's a case, and I'm sure that your counsel will advise me about it, Julian versus Poland, in which code officer number one, like we have here, issued a permit. You should have permit for a water bottle facility in Poland. That wasn't officer number two, roughly a year later, just like your code officer, number two, came in and said, no, you can't do that. Stop the work if you're, and this needs to be used to extend the permit, which by your ordinance said no conditions whatsoever for extension, something to ask before the big years of. The law court, the state made, the highest court, said, the code officer is a little bit different than anybody else. Code officer number two, that he had 30 days to file appeal if he wanted to. He can't come in, like he asked his office a year later, say, you can't have that permit. That permit was issued in error. We don't think it was issued in error. But even if it was, trained about the station, 30 days after it was issued. Work commenced. The permit was really a way, believe it or not, I'll clarify, changes that have been made along the way. It was a code officer's suggestion to be getting a permit. Actually, we even needed one. We did it. But we got, we paid the appropriate fee a second time, and he issued us a permit in January of 2022. Along with Mr. Gerler, well-trained, who, without any en masse, who are, I'm sure, concludes several. He thinks that permission is not an issue. Well, I think there should have been issue. I think it was lawfully issued. But more importantly, to the point of his proceedings, it's way too late to challenge. I'll go point out to you that I don't believe your ordinance, I think it's really a lame sword in the general, I think it's a law of building ordinance. Tell you where you can place a building that's set back in lines of 10 feet or sidelines of 25 feet or so. Other than that, in total gain. The only limitation, and the one that the code officer, who seized upon, which code officer number one apparently didn't interpret the same way, is in the definition section, where you have a definition that says that lots that are less than 20,000 square feet merge, which would be the case here, but that's just the definition. That definition is in foot to use in the subsequent provisions of your ordinance anyway. In that, there are roughly 27 or so definitions in your ordinance. 14 of those words are defined, don't even appear in your ordinance, and that would include lots. With the exception of lot size, but the word lots would be used when it comes to communications towers. That's it. It's the only place where you will find the use of that word or words in your ordinance. So there's nothing that causes the merger, that simply defines something without then saying how that definition applies to. This is not, definitions are not, they're not the term of the ordinance that are used that determine what rights people have. And the rights that people have in a plan are, are constitutional in nature. And when a town adopts an ordinance, like the county surrender its own ordinance, that reduces or infringes the rights of individuals to use their land as they want, that ordinance has to be clear. That ordinance has to be crisp. That ordinance has to be easily understood by anyone who reads it. And that test isn't that by most reasons. So. And also in the material status, we provided to you, you'll see an exchange. An exchange, but it's replaced reasonably between your code officer and Mr. Dory. And essentially, I'm going to read it to you, some of the ones that are in supplemental, as I said. I think this is important, and I hope everybody will be able to hear me when I read this. I think we're all, we're generally, we're, we're, the document legislation says that if you can have one house on a lot, you have to. And now that this is due, I think the town decides to adopt it, or instead of implement that law. So here's the letter. From Mike to Dan, meaning Dan Dory. The proposed changes to the town and the land use ordinance are scheduled for a June town meeting. The ordinance changes will affect 30 days from the date they're, this is allowed by any possible people. If Pat currently drafted, it appears to me that your hospital at 161 Ocean Avenue, which is Matt five 24, would be eligible to construct an additional dwelling unit. The process for applying for a permit will not change. Once you provide the information required for a permit, along with completed application, I can usually process the application that we completed plumbing permit application will also be required. The second existing information on file is accepted. After I process the application, I'll notify you, permit is complete. And what the B is, have attached a permit application patent for your use. Please let me know if you have any further questions, Mike. So, how old about whether there can be two dwellings now? It's kind of gone away.
Well, not yet.
Well, it's going to go away, whether you would adopt ordinance or not. You don't, you're going to get a state challenge. So there are going to be two, there are going to be two dwellings there. The only question is whether there are two lots. And I don't think that your ordinance, even at this present form, merges those lots really by definition. I don't think that the code enforcement officers' refusal to renew a permit, when the ordinance gives no conditions whatsoever for refusing to renew a permit, a year after it's been issued, will stand up. So I think we're here for a lot of nothing at this point. You've done a good job raising a lot of money. I hope you get suspended, but I don't think that this is really worth the fight. Thanks.
Okay. So now, a question from the select board. Doris and I will go now, so we'll get that in questions regarding the information they submitted or any of the argument presented by Attorney Bear. No questions, no questions. Okay, code enforcement officer and councilman.
Yeah, if you have a question. If, in your words, that this appeal is not worth the fight, then why don't your clients simply apply for a new building permit on the rules that are coming to be effective in June and move on?
Because we have a permit that was lawfully issued before that you're refusal to recognize is your rule. Sure, that's mine.
Well, so you indicated that to the, to the tribunal that their work is not, especially what you said.
No.
Because of the legislative change.
I was referring to the amount of money that they raised, most of that as far, their work, perhaps, yes.
Okay, so you're not that, the reason we're here is because your clients have.
The reason we're here is because the code officer refused to.
Procedurally, we're here because your clients.
No, if he had, if he had, if he would have, we wouldn't be here. So we're here because of moving the town.
Okay, so you're telling, you're telling the board that you did appeal, that what you're saying?
No. But things start across the city, there's denial.
I don't have any other questions.
The letter was a conversation through email, just to clarify, that you quoted as Dan inquiring about an additional dwelling unit, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Did you get the follow-up email as well to that? So Dan, was there a follow-up email to that?
Not to that. There was a follow-up email from the initial density, the density one that said you went to, to the state and there would be a, a, uh, uh, yeah, you went back to the state on that. This is, this is on ADU. So this was a different one.
So this, this email was, I had said that you could put an accessory dwelling in it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's not what your counsel read. He said, you said, excuse me, you said additional dwelling in it, not accessory.
I read it.
Okay, well, just to clarify.
The residential areas provides for an additional, not additional dwelling.
Okay, so there was, there was a follow-up email that Dan just quoted, where I followed up with that to explain to him that based on the language that was proposed for the town's adoption, that they could put an accessory dwelling unit on there, not necessarily just an additional dwelling unit. And, and I believe the, if you let me finish, please. I believe that that was not acceptable to them because the accessory dwelling unit is different than a dwelling unit in that it needs to be subordinate in size to the other dwelling unit on the lot. And so I just want to clarify that that discussion occurred. And again, that's just based on the proposed housing opportunity changes for the land use ordinance in the town. And then I guess my next follow-up question with that is, Mr. Bear, you had said that state law would allow them to put an additional dwelling unit on there based on your interpretation of the law that will go into effect July 1st, is that correct? Okay, so the proposal and the approved language that we have proposed, which was approved by the DECT, DECD, which is the Department of Economic and Community Development for the state, which was charged in interpreting that new legislation that goes into effect, allowed the town to clarify lot area for dwelling units. And so it would not necessarily allow an additional dwelling unit as proposed. It would allow a accessory dwelling in it, which again, needs to be subordinate in size to existing dwelling in it. So I just, again, those are clarifications based on what you said.
And can I clarify that this cottage would be smaller than the existing house?
Okay, that's.
Yes.
Maybe we should wait until July.
And just to clarify, I read, um, about supplemental number six, I see, I need some T email. I believe one of those are actually free. And so I see the original email from Mr. Dory dated March 4th, 2024. Then a response from the code enforcement officer on March 7th. And then a second response from the code enforcement officer on March 19th, 2020. So there were one email from Mr. Dory to the code enforcement officer, and then a follow-up email from the code enforcement officer. Does that seem?
Correct. So my initial response to him was based on the conversations that we had during a public hearing. And then I wanted to clarify that it was not just a dwelling unit. It, they wouldn't be able to use the density bonus that's proposed, but they could use the accessory dwelling unit. And that's what I want to clarify.
As a matter of verification, I think we can see a lot.
Anything else from the code enforcement officer, if you have any questions?
Okay.
Okay, so now we see the code enforcement officer and the state council. 30 minutes for then your case, it's 6:49, we'll round, get off, we can do a minute or half, and then allowing you to speak until 7:20 if necessary. Following that, the door, you'll be able to ask questions. Actually, the select board first asked a question from the door. So, good day, please.
Goodbye, until 7:10.
Good evening, just so that people listening, clear, I may have a little idea of what's in the 24 months. Thank you for being here. I just asked to make clear the materials that you submitted, even part of our record.
Thank you for being here. Uh, I just ask to make clear the, uh, the materials that you submitted, uh, even part of our record, etc., by the way. Your reading position in that, is it a board of peers? I'm just gonna baffle a couple minutes and mostly time, talk, you know, facts. Uh, you have limited jurisdiction, and that jurisdiction is to uphold the code enforcement officer's action. Uh, if it's, uh, if it's consistent with, uh, land use ordinance provisions. It's an appeal of the December thirteen, twenty twenty two decision not to renew a dwelling permit. It's not about twenty twenty four, um, legislation might allow, it's not a new ability permit, a one single action act in December of twenty twenty two. This board cannot consider whether the ordinance is valid, whether it's invalid, whether it's constitutional, or whether it's not constitutional. You are bound by the terms of your ordinance, you are, um, given a duty to apply those terms to the code enforcement officers' action act in December of twenty twenty two. And if the board is duty proved, don't prove that, uh, what you did with, uh, in this with the law is acceptable. Your ordinance terms define lot size and the unambiguous dimensional standards for residential, uh, dwellments. They require multiple adjacent lots in the same ownership to be combined in order to be in one lots, or, or scale. So in twenty twenty, there was a permit issued for a house in the garage, the house in the garage left. That expired. The authorities submitted a, and received an application, received a permit chamber in twenty twenty two to build that house again on the same lot. Suggesting that the code enforcement office's decision, um, twenty twenty two was not supported under the land use ordinance, but it happened. In December, uh, nothing. Uh, in December of twenty twenty two, your code enforcement officer received a renewal request. And under section six of your land use ordinance, um, a renewal law permit is, uh, um. Non-mandatory, but especially, and it says it may be renewed. Mr. Doreen looked at, at the proposed application, and looked at what was on the lot, and he looked at your ordinance. Uh, and affirmed that, um, the door is untitled for to the structure that, that they were asking to do the permit. They had a month. Within which that the existing permit was valid, during which they could have, but did not complete at least thirty percent of the permit. So had they on the back, that would have been a legal ordinance substantial completion, uh, and it looked at the permanent minimum. They chose to do it instead. So you're in a situation where, um, these twenty twenty two permits expired on, so it's turned out, expired on its own. In January of twenty twenty three. So there's, there's no subsequent improvement. This appeal doesn't address whether a subsequently for that application expired. It doesn't deal with, uh, twenty twenty four and whether they asked for an accessory dwelling unit or not. Uh, none of that is, has any bearing on what's included this board. Uh, all your design, all your design, all you're asked to do is to determine whether or not my builder had the ability to. Uh, decline to renew a permit in December of twenty twenty two, suggests that, that, that the non-mandatory land use such as the land use ordinance. Uh, is in that discussion. As I said, I'm most of the time, I can answer your questions, uh, and to explain this reason. The, uh, with respect to the ordinance.
Thanks, Dan. Um, so I just wanna clarify. So I am a code enforcement officer certified by the state of Maine. I've been employed. In Mar Harbor as a full-time deputy code enforcement officer, part-time at Sorento and part-time at Sullivan. I am sworn in in each one of those towns, and am required to uphold not only the constitution of Maine, but the land use ordinance in the towns in which I'm employed. Um, I do that to the best of my knowledge and ability, and I believe that I do it fairly and consistently. So, um, the fact of this case are. That I didn't consider any previous. Permits. I didn't consider how septic design may have been put in place or who permitted that. Um, I was requested in early December of twenty twenty two, uh, to renew a building permit that was about to expire in a month. So doing my due diligence in researching that permit. I looked at the lot in question, and I say lot, not lots. The town has, I looked at the property card and the tax map, and this is listed as a single lot. So that's the information that I had in front of me. And then I reviewed the land use ordinance. The land use ordinance, as Dan said, says that the first part I wanted to see is can a permit be renewed? And it says that it may be, does not say shall. Um, so I further, I investigated again in my due diligence to see what was on the lot. Um, I had the opportunity to actually visit the garage when Susan, uh, had invited me in to discuss another matter. So I knew that that was a dwelling unit as defined by state law. So I looked and, uh, the construction had not begun yet. Um, I continued to, uh, research the land use ordinance, and I came upon the definition of lot size. That specifically says that a lot of less than twenty thousand square feet, if there are adjacent lots. Under the same ownership, that they're required to be merged. So then that reaffirmed in my mind. Uh, based on the tax map, the tax card, and the land use ordinance, that this was a single lot. The land use ordinance also says that. A, uh, single family dwelling unit, the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet. And for multi-housing and other land use activities, proportionally greater lot size is required. So being that this is just a little over a half acre. That lot can only have, based on the land use ordinance, one dwelling in it. And based on that information is the reason that I denied the different door.
I, I would point out to the board as well, that this, this property is deemed as one lot. It's either as one parcel, you have the description in the record. And, uh, although it's spread by, um, what have been two parcels of, of older subconditions, uh, to surveil, it's hard to, um, it's bad.
Okay, so code working officer and counsel have entered their case in chief, uh, they select for tribunal, uh, they ask questions. So, um, the, uh, the substance of this, this is not stated, uh. Required. Fifty thousand square feet. As far as, you know, residences, but since, um, there's a, not a formal deal with lots involved. Um, and, and the state allows for, um. A substance is non, uh, normally found in law. How do you, how do you balance this too?
So that's, um. So first, the first step in subsurface wastewater or septic is that the property owner. Has an interest in doing something on their property, and then we contact a licensed site evaluator. So a site evaluator is. Uh, think of it as a soil scientist that's trained in designing subsurface wastewater systems, and they are, uh, licensed or certified by the state to do so. Um, there is a rather lengthy set of rules called the main subsurface wastewater rules, and they have very specific. Parts of those rules that they need to follow based on the design flows that would be appropriate. So typically for a. Uh, the minimum amount of design flow for a dwelling unit is a hundred and eighty gallons a day of effluent. And so in this case, if it were three dwelling units, you would have to design for three times that. And then they look at the soils, and the soils are going to dis, uh, dictate. How large the disposal field is, if you need a pretreatment unit, any number of different options that they have. To be able to design a system that would be adequate based on property, the soils, and the interests of the property owner. And in some cases, that's not feasible. Um, and there are rooms for variances, and I believe that in this particular case, uh, the state intervened. Um, and granted a variance for this particular system.
I'm just, um, I don't understand how we base the variance, um, who just thought this all on?
I, I, um. Rob, actually, I, I'm more than happy to discuss this, but I'm not sure that it's pertinent to this matter. Um, it was not something that I considered the septic design in renewing this permit or. Not renewing this permit, had I got to the point where it was an allowed use on this lot based on the land use ordinance, then I certainly would have looked to see if there was adequate. Subsurface wastewater, but I never got to that point. Um, because I looked at this, I looked at it as a single lot, land use ordinance says a lot this size can have one dwelling in it, and that's where, where I went from. So.
No further questions. Okay, um, the authorities in their legal counsel, um, are free to add questions, uh, the code enforcement officer, uh, guidance.
So you, uh, you don't have any reason to dispute with the, the board of members, seems to think that it's important, uh. Uh, you don't have any reason to dispute the fact that a subsurface wastewater disposal system was designed and approved by both the state of Maine, the HHS, and your predecessor.
Um, I don't have any reason to dispute it. It's a dumb deal at this point.
It's in, it's in the file, right?
It's in the ground, it smells wrong, but.
And that system as designed accommodates three, two bedroom dwellers.
I haven't looked at the plan in a while, so I can't answer that question for you. So if you say that and you have a plan for any of them, that's fine. I'm sure you do.
Um, and you said in your communications, uh, recently, your email communication with, uh, Dawn, uh, that. Uh, Dan, if you, uh, that, uh, the separate design on file was fine.
It would, it is, I believe that's not, I didn't use the word find, but I think that I said the, the system on file would be acceptable, and obviously that's going to be based on what type of. Dwelling they decide to do if they were doing an accessory dwelling in it. So, so at a minimum hundred and eighty gallons, if that's designed for three dwelling units, then yes, it would be accurate.
Good, okay. And. You did, your only basis for refusing to extend the permit. Was your disagreement with previous CEO Baker, uh, in thinking that our client should not have issued in the first place because of the lot size.
Correct. Um, my decision not to renew the permit was based on. The language in the land use ordinance.
What language?
The language in the land use ordinance that explains that you need to have twenty thousand square feet for dwelling in it.
Right. So you disagree with Mr. Baker's analysis of this situation because he did, we have no doubt about that.
I can't comment on Mr. Baker's analysis of anything. I haven't spoken to him about it.
A criminal position.
Okay.
Were the facts any different when he issued his permit when you refused to issue the permit?
I don't think they were.
So, section six of this ordinance. Says all permits shall be void after one year of the date of issuance. Unless a substantial amount of proposal has been completed, if necessary, a permit may be before the expiration date, right? Correct. The original permit can be renewed a total of three times after which a permit must be obtained. Your attorney is suggesting that you have discretion about whether to extend a permit or not. Is that your reading of that, that section?
I would say that the word may would give me the opportunity to not renew a permit if I felt if this. Not appropriate or based on the land use ordinance.
Yes, well, I think that may applies to the permit holder. The permit holder may apply to your permit.
You're welcome to interpret it however you like.
Otherwise, there are no standards there whatsoever. Where you can base your decision not to extend that permit, when the ordinance itself says that it can be extended up to three times. There is no standard there at all, but make your decisions sort of arbitrary and capricious with them.
Uh, I don't believe that any of my decisions in this matter have been arbitrary or capricious.
Just words.
Uh, yes, and I find them rather insulting.
Well, those are the words, of course, you fired.
Well, I said, the court can say whatever they want. You're saying to me, and I find them objectionable.
Okay, well, I guess that's good that you do.
As I said at the very beginning, I am fair, uh, consistent. And if I'm nothing else, those are two things that I take to heart as code enforcement officer. So when somebody suggests that I do something capriciously or arbitrarily, I find it insulting.
Well, I apologize for the words, the words I'm given to use, and I'm sure that you don't think that anything you do is arbitrary or capricious.
Thank you.
Uh, have you reviewed the letters, uh, that were sent to your predecessor, Mr. Baker, uh? Appellants numbers, uh, something of four and five.
In regard to.
Have you reviewed them?
I'm not sure which letters you're referring to. December twenty seventh, two thousand and one, twenty one, excuse me, uh, thirty one, two thousand and four. Um, perhaps you can tell me what the basis of those were, the gist of those letters are, and I can answer that.
Sure, um, uh, in the, uh, December thirty first, uh, letter, um. To me, in the December twenty seventh letter, uh, this is from Susan, actually, not Dan, um, it's my understanding of building permit number six two four, uh, dated. Uh, code fourteen twenty twenty may in effect not expire because I have completed more than thirty percent of the projects identified on the building permit. Have you looked at that permit?
I have seen that letter. Um, I was not considering that letter or that permit because that's not what I was asked to do. I was asked to review a permit that was issued on January thirteenth, twenty twenty two, to build a cottage on this lot. That's what I was asked to do.
And that permit was issued after these letters? And all of the other communications that we've been discussing, with the exception of your more recent communication.
That's correct.
So after receiving those letters, you are necessarily issued enough.
Okay.
Correct.
Uh, I believe so.
But the January twenty two. And then you came along the end of twenty two, early twenty three, and said, no, not renew.
That's correct, basically.
Okay, no further questions from the authorities. So at this point, uh, we included the public hearing aspect, uh. At this point, we'll now, uh, have public comments. Um, for public comments, we asked that. Yeah, go ahead. So the, the, um, bill of bills, uh, something, uh, there's still with seven, seven, and several requirements. In this. Well, 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 require well energy seals to be installed, um, the well, a lot of them requires well energy beats. Well, when it's sealed, it's all the minimum depth fifty centimeter lowering, and we talked about, uh, well, uh, four, as well as. The future well, uh, two, um, have those sealed, been installed?
We do have, I think you're talking sales like casing. They have additional casing.
Because it's already installed, so steel is something that happened.
I'm not sure what you mean. Like, are they covered? I don't know.
There are pacings, there, when they were installed, there were pacings to a depth.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
And he's saying the depth was not sufficient and the seal need to install.
If he said seal, I think the word is casing. So the casing, because the wells are so close, in order to make sure that there's no contamination, you go down further, and yes, we had additional casings put in. So that we, we, we're really very, we're very concerned with our own health. If they want us to put casings, you know, a certain depth, that's what we're going to do.
Right, so.
Can I just interject a second? So you guys are saying the same thing. So a well seal is when they put an additional casing over the original casing and send it down farther so that if there were any effluent that were coming here. So typically, a well is required to be a hundred feet away from the disposal field. And depending on several conditions, you can grant a variance to bring it down as close as sixty-five feet or less. And obviously, in this case, the state approved less than that. And then so the site evaluator, in this case, Mr. Labelle, who, by the way, is a very good site evaluator, been doing it a very long time, said that you need to put this additional protection, and so they mentioned that they did that.
So that's casing with both sides of the original?
That's correct.
Except in this particular case, we knew how close it was, so you can also have it put in initially.
Right, so the new swell you had installed, you know, July twenty-one.
July twenty-one? I don't think we had a well in July, March, maybe?
Right.
Yeah, it rolled on March. It was my father's birthday, March ten.
Well, that's where the paperwork filed with the state. So according to the state website, well, that has a case of four, four tests.
Have you been doing independent research?
I, this is your information.
That information was in the paper, right, that you've been providing? The state, you just say website.
Well, that's one of the websites. So. Did you, did you review the website regarding standards for the? No, the information we gave to me was the various requirements of the septic system of wells related to the septic system installation. Well, stated requirement for a certain depth of the new swell when the building is installed. And it was easy to set up, see, well, that was that was fallen, and it shows the minimum depth. So one, so you, a lot of these are mind questions. I think the, the issue of a well septic system is considering the scope of your review here about what the appeal has been. The blowwater drilling is not one safe ground to review here for you. So you can continue with this on, I should be glad I don't think. I'm not sure what you'll gain from that and helping you make your decision here tonight regarding the issues for you. Okay, I understand about the safety. This is related, but I think it's not relevant. It's your, you get inside of it relative or not ultimately. I don't know either. So you're free to continue with this question, but my view of this is that it's not necessary. So any other questions or more? Okay, so with that, we'll now have public comments. If you could, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. The select board will identify you. We'll then ask you to stand if you're able and say your name and where, what town you live in. And then you have three minutes to provide any comments that you'd like to regarding this issue here tonight. So if you can't get out there today, I don't want Tuesdays, you know, you know, it has to be relevant to the issue to appeal here tonight. So with that, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Sir, please hit me to stand.
My name is Dale Strohmeyer.
Sir, if you come a little closer, you can say I can't give it out, I'm sorry.
And it was so right, so. And a question I would like to ask, I'd like Mike to.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry, sir. Can you say your name again?
Dale Strohmeyer.
Dale Strohmeyer.
Yes, S A R H, M A I E R. I had to do that all my life. I'd like, I'd like to ask Mike if he would repeat again his exact reason for turning down the permit. And then I would like to ask the boundaries whether they agree with that or not, whether you're disputing his his findings.
Well, I think, so sir, this is the public comment to your, you're allowed to provide comments, but the parties have already exchanged that information, I would say. So if you have any comments, let me on what you heard here tonight, or any materials you reviewed that were submitted, please do so.
So I guess then my, my comment is this, and that is that it sounded to me like what Mike turned the permit down for, they are not disputing that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Would anyone else from the public like to provide a comment? Going once, twice, okay, so, thank you. That includes the public hearing asked component of tonight's meeting. Now, the public meeting is, hearing is closed, so we ask that the parties in the public not providing further comments. And now is the opportunity for the board to deliberate of what they heard here tonight and to vote on making a decision. So the board, all two of you are, you know, so you heard, you reviewed the information that was submitted, heard the argument and the evidence that presented here tonight. We had one public comment, there were written public comments that were submitted prior to this that have been shared with you. That's all the information that you should be considering here tonight. Is only what was filed by the parties, what was provided in public comments, what written in morally, and then what you heard here tonight on the board. So you've heard a lot, and so my job here is to help you work through your decision. I don't care, and I don't mean this in a, in a political way or anything, but my job is not here to say I think one or the other party should like. My job here is to make sure that they follow the process and make a united decision, so I just want that to be clear. So you heard a lot of information here tonight. This is not a common place for you to be in. I'm in the public and wearing this judicantor hat. But I think what might be helpful is first, if you have any questions or pain about a process or anything that you heard and how I'm going to proceed to make a decision, I can provide you my thoughts on how the process that you should follow. But I also think it'd be good for you to talk about what you heard, what you read, and what you're thinking, and then we can kind of start our reports. The motions for you to involve the evidence and person that and how, you know, what decision they have made.
Now, that, yeah, okay. I was like, in, for, uh, to be clear, separate from people I'm talking about from what is actually there on record. And what I see is there is, okay, there was a permit for the permit for new bedroom cottage with garage and office stories. In two thousand twenty-two, there was a permit for a new two-story house. And what we see in the what we see in the new permit, and this I think is really important. It says application two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath and full kitchen. And then in the permit, it asks what the vacant land is, whether vacant land is. And what it says is what the use of the property is that vacant land and two out of the buildings, it says nothing about another residence. So I think that that, that on the record is what we actually look at. It doesn't matter, you know, that or whatever, yeah, it automatically is. There is on the record that there is a permit, and it does not mention the residence, just two out of the buildings. And that's exhibit six of something. And then the other thing was that, which is clear, is that the denial was because that lot size will only have one residence. Okay, so that's what's there that we can see on, been writing. And then the other thing is, so we have that to look at in the land use ordinance. And, and so he said, we, we can't say whether the land needs ordinance is good, and we have to go with the land use ordinance. So what it says is all permits void after one year if less than thirty percent is completed. Renewal is asked before expiration date, so they did ask for renewal. So that's now, what I found was interesting, it said, this is the final which, and this components, the provisions of, that have the highest requirement are left prevail. That was number fourteen. And then number seventy was lot size required, minimum lot size of two thousand, twenty dozen square feet for for one building and multiple adjacent lots under the same ownership after nineteen seventy-four must be combined with a minimum lot size. So what it shows is you have an application for this minimum lot size particle for a building and no mention in the application that there is another residence. So, well, even that's what I think the drama. So we don't want to lose sight of what that is there.
So I think we have to sign some fast. So where's we can, whether my so this is, this is their to some point. Do you know that comes from certain? We can know that. It's made of this. It's shown several times. It says, Theo, of course, it's all everything is on.
I believe it was included in the original building application until the permit.
Yeah, I want to know the other thing that's.
E.
E.
Exhibit E.
Fourth page M. And this, what you, that, yeah, correct, because it's E page four, looking at the schematic style P zero four six nine thirty, July twenty twenty, that model, the. It's, the question of whether or not lots two or four are maybe combined, what's your opinion?
I go by what it says. You're at the it's, I think maybe you want to combine. Combine number D.
And.
Multiple, multiple, well, here multiple adjacent blocks under the same ownership at nineteen seventy-four was completely combined.
So. And are you referencing the definition of lot size in the land use ordinance? Yes, right here. So you're referencing the definite lot size in page eight, July twenty seven. Or in addition, the purpose. Okay. So I can interject a little bit. So my understanding is that you have its dynamic interpretation of the definition of lot size, that the lots have all merged into one lot. Right, two lots. Lots two. Are, are, yes, okay, so that's your, you've done your third form. And you, you know, the record, you view the ordinance, that's your, both yours, determination. So I think the kind of the two other main issues then are, one, whether you, if I didn't I think there's three religions here, I think, that you, that one is the law that you're saying combined. And you're saying, so I guess the next question is, is your interpretation of the ordinance that the definition of lot size as reference on page eight provides a minimum lot requirement for new single-family residence of twenty thousand square feet? Is that interpretation? Okay, so you determined, your understanding is that this definition applies to proposals for new construction residential drawing units under the land use ordinance. My next question would be then the issue of the substantial, oh, I'm sorry, the issue of whether or not the code enforcement officer has the discretion to renew a, decide whether or not to renew a permit under the ordinance, because I think that's kind of the next natural question. And that goes to second six of the land use permit. And the final comment session, I will write that to you, that's all, break down to you, Diana. And it goes on to the next page. My observation that it's the CEO's responsibility to decide after it files. Okay, so you, you heard the arguments tonight. The code enforcement officer's argument is their discretion. The Dory argument is that it's the applicant's discretion to extend. Your, your interpretation of section six is that it's code enforcement officer. Okay, Diane, you agree?
Okay.
Um, the third issue I think you should consider is whether or not the Dordley's commence substantial construction, um, under as defined in the ordinance. Um, so substantial, substantial star, sorry, the definition of substantial star, that's on the bottom of page nine of the landing ordinance, sorry, that is highlighted. So did you hear, so if you allow that to read to the record. So the definition is completion of thirty percent of a permitted structure where you measure as a percentage of estimated total cost, i.e. the foundation malls and not just the flat. So did you hear evidence tonight from either of both parties that would lead you to determine one or the other, whether it's substantial star? Okay, and what is your determination of, of whether or not substantial is the bank of star?
So, so the ordinance says, um, we wish for thirty percent of a green structure, well, particularly the typical structures. One, they didn't get along with the start. So my interpretation is that, and third percent of the second structure you can include.
Okay, and that second structure, by, now, there were multiple permits issued, correct? Uh, the second permit, as I understand it, was issued after the, the extension of the permit was issued after the garage structure was built. Is that your understanding? Is that for the second permit? Well, apparently, everyone's good, um. So I guess I'll ask clarification and make sure I got my, the the garage was built, this don't sort of been built subject to the permits origination, I just want to be fair.
So, correct, the first permit was for a garage and a cottage, the garage was completed, the cottage wasn't started. A second permit, which is the one that is in debate tonight, was issued to construct a cottage.
Just for the cottage.
Just for the cottage.
Okay, that's what I'm.
The cottage was included.
In the first permit, and I've been trying to clarify it anyway, so the first permit included full structure. Set the, the garage was built. Second permit included, revolve only the, um, the cottage, correct? Okay, if anyone's hearing, so, okay, so that, for that is the factual underpinnings. Is that still your, okay, understanding that substantial star, not, there was no substantial star. And Diana, okay, so.
If, if you told me that what I need to keep for the undestructive, for the whole house being twice, that it's only thirty percent of the house coming twice, I'd be, I'd be, more than I mean that.
Okay, so and you, that's based on information you reviewed in the pre-filing materials, and what you heard here tonight, that's definitely, okay. So, what I'm hearing from before, and again, you, it's your decision, but you determine that the, it's the code enforcement officer's discretion on whether or not to extend the permit, that substantial star are not, there was no substantial star on the residence, and that that you are applying the definition of, um, minimum lot or lot size, um, as a requirement with landing ordinance, and that has two impact. One, it merges the lots into one single lot, because they were, uh, based on the language in there, because they were on your back in nineteen seventy-four, um, in order to meet the minimum lot size. And that two, uh, that the twenty thousand square foot minimum lot requirement per single-family residential unit, um, applies, um, to the lot in question. Okay, so based on all that, I, you know, I'll allow you to tell me where you think you're going start, whether you're going to prove or deny.
Well, we, we're bringing the nine to deal with these things with.
Okay.
Agree with what is on the record.
Okay. From, okay. So that's where the board's heading. And, um, the code enforcement officer committed, uh, what's called, uh, proposed findings of that conclusions of law. And the reason, um, that I have to be creative, because if this matters, assuming we follow where your interests head, if this matters, subsequently appealed to a court, it's very important for the court to have, um, finally, for this war, an issue where it's called finding of facts, conclusions of law, because if you don't, even if you, your decision is right, is right, you can die in the court, you don't give them enough information to, for the court to know, okay, what basis you're finding on, and why. They'll remand it from right back here, and I'll have to, you kind of keep going with this. Um, you don't want to do that, um, it's a waste of time, money, and everything. So, um, I would suggest that you consider the proposal, because it seemed to be, you're leaning towards, it seemed to be, we were heading towards a denial appeal. I think it's in the board's best interest to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law that were submitted by the code enforcement officer as attorney. Um, and, well, so you, I, we provided this information last week, you have a chance to, uh, review it, but I would suggest, I mean, there are nine, there are eleven numbered paragraphs. We can page one of the record and have him vote on whether or not you agree with the one looking there. And then at the end, you know, and then that can be the decision, or then based on ultimate, the the way that would work is then, uh, I will, I will help you draft the final findings and conclusion that will use this as the basis. I might have a few things here and there we can consider at your next meeting. All will be based on what was submitted and said there tonight. And then if you approve of them in your next meeting, we're gonna sign off on that, and that would be the findings, back and conclusions of law, representing the decision. And then if that appeal is filed, that's what the court will receive to review. Does that sound like a good way to go forward here? Okay, we, we just love to be, and tell us as, apparently, the. If that's, I'm, I'm open to the arguments, Scott, and how they have seen on that.
Uh, I, I will, uh, refer to the board guidance of the board, I took the board as, as, uh, the three attorneys, and now the law court is being, uh, given, uh, at least a little bit strict about making sure the municipal boards are, um, adequately documenting findings from the hearings. And, um, I will care what process, which it takes to, well, to, to, to do its job, um. But I'd like to make sure that the findings are clear and.
I think the. Do you have to make a, right on, okay, I can do that. Okay, so this document stated, uh, the town signed the state board signing sitting as the board appeals. Uh, it, uh, this is regarding Daniel Dordley's duty and plan, Dordley, that not five, watching for, finding of fact and conclusions of law. Upon consideration of the applicant's appeal and the code enforcement officers' December thirteen commitment to denial of their application to renew in January twenty-two, two building permit of the Reverend's property, on the Reverend's property, and after the no-ho of hearing, amay in one second, twenty-twenty-four. The board finds follows. One, applicants are co-tenants in real estate, try for the deed as a parcel of land designated as lot numbers two and four. Second, next, we will number three, not the title, surrounded the name, map, re-surveyed, adapted, adopted, adopted from the Simpson Plan for the Charles Dean and Realty Corporation of New York, nineteen twenty-five to nineteen twenty-six. And that then references to Superior Court Record in twenty K, eight lot. So do you agree that, that, okay? Uh, why don't we have a vote on that? Did you vote on that? Okay, all right, so we have a vote of two. Okay, um, okay. The town acted in property one lot, and it's not five, lot twenty-four, containing point five six acres, or twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-three square feet. Superior Court Record exhibit B, comma, R, on page four. The Dordley's acknowledge the property is a single parcel of land containing twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty square feet of lot. Superior Court Records, exhibit R, page three. Four volumes, D parcel, D parcel containing contiguous land in common, in common ownership, constitutes a single lot. So, um, okay, two of them, okay, two of them. Adopting, uh, finding number two. Number three, by a permit issued on October fourteen, twenty-twenty, the town's code enforcement officer committed a speeding warning to build a two-bedroom, bedroom cottage, a two-bedroom cottage on the parcel along with an accessory two-car garage containing a bedroom and office on second floor. Superior Court Record exhibit B. The permit application did not seek approval of a plan in which both buildings would contain kitchens, and the permit did not allow Dordley's to build kitchens in both.
Got that, that's fine, we'll get it.
Okay. Two and zero in support to the adopting number three. Number four, at some point, the Dordley's built accessory garage with a kitchen, but did not build a cottage identified on the twenty-twenty permit. Instead, in January twenty-twenty-two, they obtained a second permit to build a two-story home at the Rock, with Superior Court Record exhibit E. The permit application did not reference the kitchen that they had previously installed on the garage that had been permitted in twenty-twenty.
That's, okay.
And two O in favor of adopting number four. Number five, the twenty-twenty permit was issued fifteen months after the initial permits issuance, and before construction of the home began. The Dordley's did not complete at least thirty percent of the committed home during the fall month following the twenty-twenty two permits issuance.
That's a sign, we'll get it.
Two O in favor of adopting number five. Number six, it's on the December thirteen, twenty-twenty-two, forty-one and off, there were two years remaining in twenty twenty two building permits. As they become aware of the kitchen of Dordley's garage, correctly noted that the property did not meet required forty thousand square feet dimensional standards for two residential dwelling units, Superior Court Record exhibit B.
That's a sign, we'll get it.
Two zero in favor of adopting finding six. Number seven, the landing ordinance section six dictates that building permits shall be void after one year from the date of issuance, unless a substantial amount of the goal has been completed. Superior Court Record exhibit H, page two. The ordinance defines the term substantial star as completion of thirty percent of a permitted structure or used measured as a percentage of estimated total cost, i.e. the foundation malls that not just the flat. Superior Court Record, exhibit H, page nine.
That's a sign, we'll get it.
Two O in favor of seven. Eight, the landing ordinance defines lot size in manner of arm, a combination of or aggregation of multiple adjacent lots and same ownership. Lot size require minimum lot size for new single-family residential units, including mobile homes and seasonal homes, of twenty thousand square feet. For multi-unit housing, the older age activities are proportionate with greater lot size required based on the statutory formula. Any lot created legally prior to January first, nineteen seventy, is exempt from the requirement. But multiple adjacent lots and same ownership after nineteen seventy-four must be combined in order to meet the minimum size. Superior Court Record exhibit H, page eight.
We'll get it.
Two O in favor of eight. Nine, the landing ordinance defined residential dwelling unit as a new, which is a sign, but so the lady producer are permitted seasonal, or sorry, seasonal or temporary living quarters for one payment. The terms of mobile homes are not recreational vehicles. Superior Court Record exhibit H, page nine.
We'll get it.
Two O in favor of nine. Ten, all previously issued building permits have expired without substantial completion on the home. To the extent that any permit would have allowed two residential dwelling unit on a lot containing fewer than forty thousand square feet, that permit would have been issued in violation of then-existing board and slot size restrictions.
We'll get it.
Two O in favor of adopting ten. Eleven, the Dordley's appeal does not relate to any building permit application or application filed after January twenty twenty-three.
We'll get it.
And then, based on the above findings, the applicants have not, according to the third, on appeal, the code enforcement officer in December thirteen, twenty twenty two decision to treat the Dordley's property as a single lot, not request to renew January twenty twenty, the building permit, based upon application of the ordinance dimensional standards was proper. The Dordley's appeal is therefore denied, and code enforcement officers actions upheld. Uh, want to vote on whether or not to adopt that finding.
That's not bad.
We're in that. Okay, two O in favor of adopting. Okay, so. You're done. Uh, the next step is you finalize the findings, the fact, and conclusions of law. And then your next meeting, uh, two of you are voting on whether it tactically reflects everything that you heard, read, happened here tonight. And if it does, um, that is signed, and that will be the written findings and conclusions. And the ordinance choose to appeal, uh, that would be the basis, the doubt of appeal with Superior Court. Anything else from the parties?
No, that would be a done.
Okay, glad we moved to hearing tonight, I don't think there's anything else on here. All right, thank you for all very much for hearing, uh, overly, and.